Okay, I have a call meeting tomorrow. Everyone please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of Washington, we stand one nation under God, and with the same heart as you. Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the regular meeting in the executive session? Any additions or corrections for either?
There was a special meeting as well.
Special meeting?
It was separately or...
Oh, I have it somewhere. Um, we'll do them separately. The regular meeting, the regular scheduled meeting, is there any questions on that? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
Kathy made a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley second, it's all in favor. Pose, motion carried. Uh, approval of minutes of the executive session. Any questions or additions to the executive session minutes?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of this executive session.
Brooke made a motion to approve the executive session minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy second, it's all in favor. Pose. Stand.
I'll stand.
Chuck, you stand. Um, minutes of the special meeting, any additions or corrections there? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke second, it's all in favor.
Yeah.
Pose.
I've seen as well.
Shirley and Chuck have stayed. I think you have stayed in the last one too, right, Shirley?
You have stayed in the last one too. Do you have stayed?
From the...
Yeah. I'm with you.
Okay, she has stayed for the last two, Gina. Approval of claims and payroll is presented. Any questions on claims and payroll? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and payroll.
Kathy made a motion, Shirley second, all in favor. Pose, motion carried. New business preserving Main Street construction phase Grand Avenue. Jess, Gina?
Uh, so, we had advertised, uh, the customer proposals. For Grand Avenue procurement, the construction portion of the Preserving Main Street grant. And, uh, we had sent, um, two, five listed, uh, approved Grand Admins, and they only got one proposal back, and that was for our ARA. So, we had interviewed the ARA, since they were still applicant, and tonight we are asking them to be appointed as a Grand Administrator for the construction portion of the project.
I'll read the, the letter, and then the board will vote whether to accept them, and then I'll sign the letter, and we'll send that to... Dear Mr. Fry, please inform me that the Administrative Resources Association has been selected to provide administrative technical assistance services with the Preserving Main Street construction project, posed to be funded with the CDVG Preserving Main Street pilot program funds. Selection is based on selection criteria and copy of which was furnished to the RIP. This selection included your demonstrated performance assisting communities with the administration of other grant programs, and the negotiated scope of work and fee of $5,000 for environmental assessment, $131,880 for general grant administration and technical assistance, and $10,000 for labor stability services. Please prepare a fee for tendered contract by review and execution. Upon execution of this contract, you will be authorized to incur only those necessary to complete the environmental review process and obtain a lease of funds from Indiana Office of Community and World Affairs. You will be authorized to incur other costs, other contract costs upon such lease of funds. Sincerely, Curse for attending council president. Any questions for Gina or Jess, or any questions regarding the...
I probably should mention, because the name itself consisted of, because we named the owner in your place, myself and Tim Ritter, was the committee who read over the proposal and conducted the interview.
Any questions?
No.
Is there a motion to approve selecting ARA as the Grand Administrator for the construction portion of the Preserving Main Street program?
I'll make that motion to approve at ARA.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Shirley second, it's all in favor. Pose, motion carried. Anything else, Gina?
No, that was it.
Uh, third place is requesting to close Parker Street between 7th and 8th Street on Saturday, September 24th, from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Uh, he has approximately 400 bikers coming on said day. Mr. Wilson said he would find laborers and businesses on that day and will also make sure that someone has statements at the bottom of 7th Street that will direct the traffic.
I assume this would be similar to the, the report and tab situation.
She requests him to use town signage again?
Um, I asked him about blockades. He just looked in that somebody would be there directing traffic, so I assume the probably, the blockades are probably needed. I can let Brent know, or have them reach out to Brent.
Is there a motion to approve the street request on September 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., between 7th Street and 8th Street and Parker Street?
I'll make the motion to close, um, the alley in the street, 8th Street and 7th Street.
Kathy made a motion to close the alley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke second, all in favor. Pose, motion carried. New Mercy's contract?
So, the, the lease of space at the Wyman Building at New Mercy's, this is our first year of lease, I believe, of this space. Um, it has, the contract itself hasn't changed, it's just a lease for $1 per year. Um, and this lease term would run from September 1st to September 1st, 2025. I actually haven't reached out to them to see if they would like to continue the lease, but I'm assuming if they would like to, I probably had to have your approval in this meeting because it's coming due September.
And just a reminder to the public, it's, um, a dollar per year for the leasing of the facilities. They pay the, their portion of the utilities up, correct? No? Okay. Any questions?
Um, it says utilities to other costs that we pay for, um, electric, natural gas, water, sewer. Uh, the tenant is responsible for telephone, internet cable.
Okay, that's what I thought you said. Something said that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the New Mercy's contract.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Uh, insurance renewal, Gina?
So, this year, since we had switched carriers, we did not renew it for renewal this year. You know, I'm assuming it's because you cannot switch carriers if your carrier are every year, so it's a red flag. Um, so, we are sticking with Tokyo Marine, and our renewal quote, the package renewal amount is $72,267. Um, the terrorism portion premium is $625. Um, the cyber liability premium, that's increased, of course, within last year. So, I think that's all across the board. Um, that premium is now $7,902.75. This is an overall increase actually from last year, but we have passed property and equipment.
Any questions for Gina?
Is this just liability issue?
Gina, what was it last year? Do you remember?
It was, it was, it was considered less, I'd say. I want to say it was in the low 60s. I don't have it, I'm sure I've got that number right.
Okay.
It's a, a proper...
Right.
Have they taken off the former street department office quo? Is that excluded?
Yes, it should.
Okay.
Actually, I should probably go check that. Because that might have happened before I got that application.
It probably did, because it disclosed yesterday.
Yeah. I'll check with them.
Is there a motion to approve the insurance renewal amount for $72,267 for Tokyo Marine HCC?
That one has no, that here is different.
I think she said that number, but there's a terrorism charge?
Yeah, there is a terrorism premium there.
So, the total amount would be $72,892. Yeah, including terrorism. Are we doing, did we have the cyber liability last year? We did, okay.
Premium was very small, it's a nurse, but I think it's due to the current climate.
Okay.
Cyber means, I think, less.
So, what's the total now? Does it start?
So, the $72,892 plus the $7,902.75.
Okay, so would be approved in those two amounts? The, the total HCC premium, and then the, the total...
It's going to be $80,747.75.
What was it?
And this is still through Southeastern Insurance?
And then the carrier is Tokyo Marine.
Hey, yeah, right.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Tokyo Marine HCC quote.
Kathy made a motion to approve, Shirley second, all in favor. Pose, motion carried. Thanks, Gina. Amendment salary ordinance, this is amendment number 2022-14.
Um, with the higher level of the Water Works employee training, our, um, pay range was out of date. So, I wanted to bump that up, the same as the sewage supply and power meter training. Um, so, I bumped it up from, I think it was like 15, right under 16, to 1910, same as the sewage training.
Any questions regarding the change?
Makes sense to me, it was out of date, not being competitive with it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve salary ordinance amendment 2022-14.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Additional appropriations, public hearing. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Gina, do you want to introduce?
Yes, so, I have three different line items that, um, two of them are reporting only because they're grant funds. They're not actually funds that are being spent, but I do have to report them to the OGF. Um, the first one is the IDDC grant fund that Brent had procured for the, the, our career role here. So, that is, that grant was $5,000. And the second one is from the Franklin County Community Foundation grant for the parking lot mural at the, um, municipal parking lot at the place. So, the IDDC grant fund was $5,000, the municipal parking lot mural was $3,000. Um, and then the fire department, um, had a claim for insurance on some turnout gear. That was the emergency fire room. Um, they had a truck that was overturned and then diesel fuel spilled and soaked the turnout gear. So, we had to submit a claim. They tried to wash it, it did not work. So, they had to submit a claim to replace that gear. So, the insurance did give us the money to replace the gear, less than deductible, which is $1,000. So, I did have to reperpetrate, excuse me, reperpetrate that money. A thousand of that is from our funds because of the deductible.
Any questions, Regina, regarding appropriations? It is a public hearing, so we'll invite a public comment regarding the notice to taxpayers of additional appropriations. Gina, are you looking for a motion to approve additional appropriations?
Uh, there is a resolution, sorry.
All in favor of motion to close the public hearing, since there's no public comments?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Brooke made a motion to close. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy second, it's all in favor. Pose, motion carried. And additional appropriation, resolution number 2022-5. This is the resolution as a strategy of the public hearing. Any questions from the board regarding the additional appropriations motion? Motion to approve?
Y'all make a motion to approve.
Chuck made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
For a second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried.
While we're on the topic of, um, murals, the paint for the one in the municipal lot has come in. Um, I reached out to Autumn this week, and I'm hoping to get it started this weekend, now that the paint and all the supplies are here. Fingers crossed. Um, working on her schedule with being a student and working full-time. We're working on getting that together. Um, and to my customers, I reached out to them, I believe, last week, and he should be starting the work in Indianapolis on sometime in September, and it should be installed, like by the end of September, beginning of October.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
So, we had a flyer available, um, from, from game time, and then Brent released a budget proposal. He had asked to possibly do a new playground event, Randolph Park, that thing. So, this kind of came at the same time. So, I told Jess and Brent about it, and they're going to talk together, and they're going to try to procure the money for it. Some of the equipment, money systems, they call them, do have 100% matching funds, and then the back there's a lot of... So, we're just kind of seeking the professionals enough to...
Apply. I think that would be fantastic. I met Brent down there, maybe a month or so ago, and checked out Randolph Park, which was also a location in our treasury. So, I've spent some time exploring down there, and it definitely is... Yeah, yeah, it would be fantastic if that was updated for the people that live in that area. So, I'm definitely off or flying, looking for what we can get for it.
Yeah, other than some painting and a few cleaning up in Randolph Park, we really haven't done a lot down there, so I'm, I'm excited for this. It's in my neighborhood, so I'm definitely excited.
Is there a motion to approve all rising, Jess and Brent to, or Taylor to, right there?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Next up is building permit number 968 for RBWB Kelsey. Uh, this is for 160 East Fourth Street. Uh, it's a rent that is currently used as a residential duplex. The proposed use is to convert to a single apartment, um, to interior exterior, including new electric HVAC, volume, et cetera. Uh, the house same, but Brent had it for, but will have a two-story addition of the current first story. Uh, as a disclosure, I am the owner of RBWB. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve building permit 968.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Uh, next up is building permit number 969, also for RBWB. Again, I am a co-owner. This is for a lot located, um, just off the corner of Main Street and Mill Street. It is currently zone R3, their proposed use, it is made upon, proposed use would be to build a new two-story duplex, new construction. And it does need all separate warrants. I have a couple of prints for board members to review, should they have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve building permit 969.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley second, it's all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Um, two other things I have. Mitch and Matt are coming in today, and he is going to be doing the rest of his, um, roof repairs on the Dollar General store. They did the flat one previously, they're going to do the shingle work in the next two to three weeks, two to four weeks. They think probably three weeks. Uh, the contractors are requesting use of the parking spaces alongside the Dollar General so that they can put a dumpster, two dumpsters there, park equipment, and they also may need to use of one of the turn-in lanes um, in that facility for one to two days, max. Uh, if, if approved by the board, they would like to use town signage so that people realize that they already have the permission from the town, rather than the company that you can find it to Jess after the fact. Any questions?
No, if they're being on the corner a lot, I don't see it either way. He's going to be able to get it done.
Maybe start after so long, that's more... So, you have to worry about people.
They should have, they anticipate having about eight to 10 workers there, and so it's pretty quick. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow them to use, how many spots did you say?
He just said the whole section right there, to space it off, just for safety issues.
For a couple of days during building.
Kathy made a motion to approve Mr. Knet's request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke second, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Uh, next up, we did close on the street, the former street department building yesterday. Brooke? Uh, so, the funds that are available for there, what I would like the board to consider, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but Brent has requested in the past some bigger purchases, and since the building was the street department, I think it's only fitting that Brent gets to choose how that money is allocated. Um, one of the, or one of the several requests, not several, but one of the, um, three of the big requests, one is a new salt dump. Um, and he previously had quotes with that. I think that he would need to re-request that, but it'd be similar to what the county has, not at the salt dump, but, um, under landfill site, which is like the fabric, whatever it is. But if we would choose to allow him to have discrepancy in the ADK, give or take, um, if he could work on that, and then he also requested a additional skids tier, uh, because they're, they're using that at multiple locations, and it's a little troublesome at times. Um, and he also requested a minix that could be used for the water department. Um, so, let, what I'm proposing is that we let Brent kind of work together to see what he can come up with with that $80,000 and put it to good use for their department.
I agree.
Is there a motion to authorize Brent to submit proposals regarding the ADK?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Brent to submit proposals for the ADK.
Brooke made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy second, it's all in favor? Pose, motion carried. And Gina, Jess, would you let Brent know that he can start working on some of those quotes again? That's all I have. Brooke?
Nope, I said no, please.
Chuck, nothing?
Shirley?
You have anything, Chuck?
Anything tonight? Kathy? Jess? Gina?
Uh, just had a quick question about the budget meeting. I talked to our budgeter, DLG, and asked her, either meet on her Thursday, but asked her if I could have a second meeting, so, because we haven't really had opportunity to get together. So, I don't know what the council is thinking, like if you want to meet again, possibly next week, or wait till the, on the 1st September meeting, and do it after that? What would be better?
I'm okay to meet next week.
Better, sir.
Yeah, the only, the only days, let's see. Later in the week is better for me, Thursday or Friday.
I'm okay.
I think I'm fine all week. That's the week of the 22nd, right?
Sure.
I think I'm fine.
Shirley, could I talk?
Thursday or Friday, okay with you on the budget hearings?
Uh, what, uh...
Next week?
Okay, fine. Well, that much today.
It's a, it's a 22nd.
Or I could just send an email on the day before, I could throw out some dates and times.
That's good.
Thursday would be better than Friday.
Yeah, me too.
So, just what he said? Great. Can we do it in the evening?
Evening would be better for Brent.
Yeah, I can't, ask me anything. Unless she wants to bring her kids along, we can have a field trip.
Do, you can do six, do a little...
I can do five or six.
Do six o'clock on Thursday? That works, though.
Six o'clock Thursday.
Grant, anything, how about that?
I don't know.
Is there any, Gina, Gina, anything else tonight?
No, thank you.
Any public comments regarding any of the businesses we covered tonight?
Yeah, so, a couple...
Can you step to the microphone?
So, I told you guys about this a couple of days ago, in, in that Dollar General, they redid the roof, there is silver stuff all over the side wall. Did you guys know about that?
Yeah, I believe somebody called Ida, and Ida looked into it and found that it's appropriate use, and there was no issues with that.
Good, because we walked away the other day, it was still there, and I wonder if you know, just, you know, they can clean up their mess, it seems like the last one had earned so much.
We're aware. Anything else?
I don't, I don't know quite how, how to say this, but that contractor, whatever it was that he put on that roof, there should have been notice given to the businesses or the buildings around there that to respect what happened, because we had that crap tracked all through our store for days, and it's still out in front of our building. And then they just come in and say, oh, this is what we're going to do. Well, it's okay with everybody, and then it just blows all around. And next thing we know, we're wondering what this is, and we're not aware of anything. I mean, that's almost, did they hit a permit for that? Is there a permit for that?
You don't have to have a permit for a recourse.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I mean, it's something different than your standard proof. I mean, there's some, something, there should be some recourse somehow.
I think that the recourse was to contact Ida. Ida did an inspection.
Who is that, the air people for Indiana Terror?
Indiana Department of Environmental Management. They came in, reviewed it, they spoke to Jess.
When did they come in?
I don't know, it's been a month ago.
Not three weeks, not long.
At least three weeks at least.
They issued a, they issued a finding, there was no violation, and so...
I was talking with my neighbor, and they were supposed to come, I think it was this past week. Yeah, they were, and it must have been there.
The contractor, you mean?
No, no, I, whoever was talking about the air...
This past week?
Yeah. Nobody's ever, nobody ever came in and saying, I mean, I mean, it's very obvious that this stuff was right out in front of our building, Carl's building, Paul's building, Dollar General, I don't know about the other way, it just depends on which way the wind blows. But, I mean, so what did they do? What did they...
They issued a report that there is no violation, and it's an approved use of building product, that there's no violation of what they did. So, they issued a clear report for that, and they paused the turn, the town in for using the same product on the Zimmer building. They issued a clear finding on that as well. The county doesn't have any restrictions against it, the state doesn't have any restrictions against it, and it's not violating with the town, but there are additional restrictions with the, Ida doesn't put on. I mean, if Ida finds it, it's environmental... The county doesn't have any restrictions against it. State doesn't have any restrictions against it and it's not violating with the town, but there's no restrictions with the, Idaho doesn't put on. I mean, if Idaho finds it, it's environmentally.
It should be a standard way to do a business now, where that stuff all over your roof and fly all over the neighborhood.
It's, it would be, it's a land that I dispute. It's not something that the town would get involved with.
Okay.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kathy made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried.